Folks, we're back. This is Steve Sass and Jim Jonas with another episode of Veterans in Politics. Today, our guest is going to be Dr. Nancy Bruni. She's the Las Vegas City Councilwoman for Ward Number Six. But before we get to Dr. Bruni, Jim, do you have any rants?
No, actually, I don't have any rants. I've just been doing good.
By the way, you look good today.
Yeah, and I took your advice, so.
You got a haircut.
Yeah, it started working out a little bit.
Oh my God, you shaved. Now you're not going to scare the kids.
Well, hopefully, I never scared them before, but who knows? Maybe I did, maybe I didn't.
See, that's the Jim Jonas I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, back in the day.
Well, you know, it's kind of a, yeah, you know, I'm working through stuff.
We all work through stuff.
I'm not going to air that publicly.
No, we all work through stuff.
I'm just excited to have our guest on because you know how important City Council is to me.
It's the rubber meets the rubber.
Yep. How many times have I said that?
Ever since Bob Beers.
And it was actually Bob Beers is the one that.
Told you that.
coined the phrase, yeah.
You stole it from him.
Yeah, basically.
I hope he trademarked this so he could sue you.
Well, hopefully not because I don't need to be sued. We'll see.
All right, Dr. Bruni.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bruni, which one would you prefer?
It doesn't matter. I answer to both.
Thank you for coming on. Tell us about yourself.
So I have been a resident of my home in Ward Six for 16 years. Really active in the Las Vegas community before running for City Council. Before I ran for City Council, I founded and ran the Kenny Gwynne Center for Policy Priorities, which is the state's only bipartisan policy institute. So did that for almost 10 years. And then I'm originally from Texas, military family. So grew up with family that really emphasized service to God, service to country, and service to community. Catholic.
Catholic? Catholic to you? What's up?
Yeah. My dad actually was in the priesthood. Luckily, he dropped out and married my mom. Otherwise, I wouldn't be here.
Yes, yes. So how did you, Dr., tell us about that?
So after I did my undergraduate and then did my master's in public policy and then felt like I needed a PhD to be in a position to actually influence policy and design policy. And so I went and got my PhD.
I like that. That's good.
Took me 10 years. I would tell you, my family, my grandmother was from Mexico and she, even though she spoke English, she always had a really thick accent. And so it was funny, my family gives me grief. First of all, I'm useless because I'm not a real doctor.
Habla español?
Sí, sí.
Ah, ¿poca y mucho?
Mucho. Trabajé y viví en Nicaragua tres años. But anyway, she would, people would call and say, like, you know, how's Nancy? And she's like, oh, you know, Sabina's not in jail. And so my family thought I was in jail. Because it took me 10 years, like, it seemed like a jail sentence, so jail, jails, yeah.
Well, I want to say congratulations on your victory.
Thank you.
You're taking over, who's the last?
Councilwoman Fury.
Councilwoman Fury. Oh, that's like night and day, huh?
Yeah.
So tell us, Councilwoman Bruni, since you, how long you been in the City Council now?
We were elected last November and sworn in in December, so almost a year, actually. Shy in 12 months. It's gone by really quickly.
I live on an island called Clark County.
I know, we just discovered. I think I literally live a mile, maybe a mile and a half from you.
Thanksgiving at your house?
I'm not cooking. I'm not cooking. You want to bring this food? You're more than welcome.
Oh, I got to bring all the food and the fixings and?
Yeah, I'm not cooking.
Okay. So Ward Six has been grown tremendously. I first moved in Ward Six back in 2003 when Michael Mack was the original City Councilman back then. Is it Michael Mack? Yeah.
No, I was one.
Michael Mack, Michael Mack. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So when was Steve Ross?
Steve Ross, Michael Mack vacated. Michael Mack was the first City Councilman for Ward Six. Oscar Goodman appointed him and then he ran in detention. And then Steve Ross succeeded him after Michael Mack vacated the seat. And then it was Michelle Fury right after that and now you. Welcome.
Thank you.
So I've been there since 2003 and I remember, well, now I'm on the island of Clark County since 2019. But I remember when cell phones didn't even work out there. And I remember when Focus Group wanted to build a whole bunch of casinos and homes on Sky. Sky Canyon going up to Mount Charleston and Mount Charleston. People were upset about that whole thing and saying it was messing up with the environmental and so on and so forth. But now that area is being built like crazy. Everywhere I go, I see cones and I think cones should be the Nevada's national symbol. Because everywhere you go in this valley, you see cones.
A lot of people call cones the state flower.
The state flower.
Interesting. I like that.
Because there's cones everywhere.
Everywhere, even when they're not working.
Although, I mean, it's almost like you've got sort of two, you know, extremes. You've got cones for the new growth, but then you see cones down Charleston because in a lot of the older areas, right, you're doing a lot of construction, right? Because you have to go back and replace the really old pipes and everything below. And so, you know, cones symbolize, yeah, symbolize growth, but also just sort of the aging infrastructure that we have too. So it's kind of like two extremes, right? But your point is well taken, like, there are just cones everywhere.
There's cones everywhere.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm not going to ask you what you're going to do about the cones because I'll be asking everybody what you're going to do about the cones.
Well, we've got tons going down Elkhorn, if you drive down Elkhorn, but it's kind of dangerous. I've had two people actually come at me straight on in the night because it's, because it's just, it's so hard to figure out, like, where the streets are navigating.
Exactly where it's, yeah.
Yeah.
But Ward Six is very diverse.
It is very diverse. It's a very unique, special place. I feel very honored to represent Ward Six. I think it is one of the most special places in Vegas.
Yes, it is because you have, when I was, when I first moved down there, it was like one apartment building that was it. The tallest building was, or probably still is now, Centennial Hills Hospital. It's the tallest building. Well, now you have apartments and you have horse area, property for horses. And sometimes you'll see cars, sometimes you'll see golf carts, sometimes you'll see ATVs and sometimes you'll see horses. So it's very, very, very diverse. How do you, how do you balance the diversity in your ward?
Well, I think we have a 2015 master plan for all of the wards, which laid out sort of areas that you might want to put commercial properties or you might want to have sort of less dense housing. And I think, you know, when you think about land use policy, and I'm just getting up to speed on all of this, you know, there's some maybe best practices or, you know, general principles. And so people will say, like, apartments are more diver, more density or more dense housing should be ideally maybe closer to freeways where folks can easily get on. If you're living in an apartment, you may be a student or so you just can get on the highway and travel. Whereas, you know, as you move farther away from major arteries, then you might want to see, you know, bigger lot sizes like you have in that area.
I can't live in an apartment. Absolutely not.
So I'm glad to touch on that because that was one of the things that, and it's one of the reasons why I'm so interested in City Council is zoning laws. So exactly, what is your knowledge on zoning in Ward Six?
I feel like I'm still getting up to speed, so feel free to ask the question, but I may not know the answer. I mean, what's, what's interesting is I did my PhD on international affairs and the movement of capital. And then I came to Nevada and when I ran the Gwynne Center, I was doing sort of state policy. And then all of a sudden, I've been thrown into like really local zoning policies. And I will tell you, Lou DeSalvio, who is the Planning Commissioner under Councilwoman Fury, he recommended that I take a class at CSN to learn, to get up to speed on local zoning law. It's very nuanced, so.
Yeah. So let me ask you this question then. If that was your expertise, then why run for City Council? Why not run for something else?
That's a great question. So a couple of reasons. When I was at the Gwynne Center, we did, you know, really in-depth policy reports. For example, one of our reports was 120 pages. And in most of our policy reports, we came up with data-driven recommendations that we hope the legislature or the county commission would adopt. And I got really frustrated that it was very rare that the legislature actually adopted what I thought were great recommendations. And so after a while complaining, I thought, you know, maybe I should stop complaining and go be in charge of actually being responsible for implementing good policy. And then the other thing that happened is I actually never thought I would run for City Council. I'm really interested in education, so at some point I thought, maybe I'll run for the region or school board. But the last couple of years, sort of before the pandemic and after the pandemic, the Gwynne Center was doing a lot of work on housing and that was a big conversation statewide, the lack of affordable housing and sort of zoning issues. And I realized that the legislature doesn't really, or I should say, a lot of the decisions about the way our neighborhoods look and whether we can balance growth with preserving our rural areas really is taken up at the local city and county level. And I don't think that we pay enough attention to the people who run for those local races. And so I decided to throw my name into the ring.
Well, I appreciate that. So my next question for you then is like, so here's something. With Ward Six expanding the way it does, well, 87% of Nevada that's unincorporated is BLM land. So now that Ward Six keeps expanding more north, are there communications between the City Council of Las Vegas and the BLM to keep expanding further north? How does, how does that conversation work?
That's a great question. I don't know if you knew this, but the BLM is sort of releasing lands for sale every once in a while. So also just last week, the BLM released, gosh, how many, maybe a thousand acres? Most of it was actually in Ward Four. There were a couple of parcels in my area, I think five acre parcels. There is a boundary right now. The hope is that at some point, BLM will expand the boundary and sell even more land to the city or the county for development or for public purposes. We actually believe one of the big projects we have in the pipeline that we need to get funding for is a big regional sports park in Ward Six, and that was BLM land. I think that's maybe 30 acres.
Okay. When I first, well, up until probably maybe now or last year, maybe. Well, when I first moved down towards it was just to get away from everybody. And what I've noticed over the years, it was mainly veterans and law enforcement that moved all the way down in that area to get away. And now everybody's like coming towards us. I can remember when I used to.
Well, that's because you're a magnet, Steve. You just attract people.
Everyone wants to be close to you.
No, I don't want them to. Anne Road was too far on the 95. And now it's, now it's like Anne Road is like nothing anymore.
Well, I mean, when I moved here, Mount Charleston was like a whole hike. And now literally Mount Charleston is the next exit after Sky Canyon. And it's like, it's literally our backyard. It's crazy.
I could get to Mount Charleston quicker than I get to the strip. So, so the growth is coming. What are you gonna, how are you gonna like get a handle on all that?
So what I heard knocking on doors is that, first of all, we are, we are running out of land. I think the, one of the, was it?
Are we running out of land? Because I don't think we're running out of land. I just want to, I don't.
Well, maybe absent BLM, well, absent BLM releasing more land.
Right, which is a good thing.
I think the home builders did a study and we have seven years left of land. And so after, we're going to at some point, right, we can grow, you know, all the way in the mountains, et cetera. At some point, we will, you will start seeing more infill and maybe building up because we're not going to keep being able to grow and grow. But I think, you know, what I heard from just knocking on doors is people understand that growth is natural or we're going to have more growth. But the concern from neighbors in Ward Six is that they don't feel like the infrastructure has kept up with the growth. So we were talking about this earlier, you know, we need another police substation. We, I think we're, we're going to get it now, but I would argue we might need another one in another part of Ward Six. We have two fire stations on the books. We just opened one back in September, but they're scheduling two more. So I think we just want to make sure that as we grow, we have the services to support the population. We have one community center right now. So we just need more of those amenities and things that you associate with a high quality of living, sports fields, baseball fields, recreational centers. So we just want to make sure we get that and advocate for that.
And Ward Six borders North Las Vegas.
It does, on Decatur. So East Decatur is North Las Vegas.
Could you tell us the boundary lines for Ward Six?
Yeah, so on the east side, it's Decatur. And East Decatur is North Las Vegas, which makes, you know, sort of planning really hard. And then the west side is Vegas and then goes down to Lone Mountain. Before redistricting, it went farther south, I think all the way to Craig or even farther south. But they took away part of that and put it back into Ward Five. And so it stops Lone Mountain on the south and then up sort of the 95 and then over Sky Canyon. And then Kyle Canyon Road is kind of the northern boundary up that way. And I used to have all of Providence, but they, again, with redistricting, southern part of Providence is now part of Ward Four, as is Centennial Hills.
So, so I've heard of this for the first time. We're having a centennial loop? Like a spaghetti bowl? Now we're having a centennial, it's similar to the spaghetti bowl.
But it's just all the construction that we've been seeing, right? So you're connecting, yeah.
There's all this stuff connecting around and connecting 95 to 14.
So I think we're actually doing the grand opening in a couple of weeks, ribbon cutting for the centennial bowl. I didn't realize until two weeks ago either that it's going to be called a centennial bowl.
Yeah, bowl.
I think it's a centennial bowl.
Bowl, okay, because I remember reading that somewhere. So Sky Canyon, going up towards Mount Charleston, all that land, what's happening there?
So Sky Canyon was a master plan community, so there's some benefit in being.
With Focus Group years back.
Well, so Focus Group bought it initially or originally. And then with the recession, they ended up, I think, I don't know if they went into bankruptcy or ended up selling it to Olympia Group. So Olympia Group actually managed the, and owned the master plan for Sky Canyon. The, you know, Kyle Canyon, we mapped it. It's got it, Kyle Canyon Road. Probably about 70 different private owners have different parcels, anywhere from one acre to 30 acres. And so we actually.
Good luck getting rid of those people.
Well, we actually just did, what we want to do is as we start building is have a common looker theme, right? You know, almost try to do like a master plan or a community input process. So we just finished a series of public meetings to invite people to talk about like what they'd like to see along Kyle Canyon Road. It's a beautiful area as you're going up to the mountains. So how can you balance commercial activity and homes with the trails that people want in that connection to our beautiful rural recreational opportunities? And so trying to be really intentional and maybe even agreeing on some design standards. So even if you have, you know, three different owners, they'll all agree to design their buildings in such a way that it looks really cohesive and beautiful.
So the only casino in Ward Six is Santa Fe now?
Correct, but Stations also owns a parcel right outside of Sky Canyon. And so they are hoping to start development on that next year or start, you know, breaking ground and pulling the permits for that.
You have to wrangle Stations not even open yet.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I know.
Now they've got a really ambitious growth plan. They've got the Inspirada one and then Sky Canyon and I think maybe one more in the works.
So that pivots and that's a perfect transition. So, so one of the things that frustrates me is the permit process. Okay, so explain to the viewers and listeners a little bit about, okay, so Steve and I say, hey, we want to build on, build something on the back of this house, but we need a permit. We have to go to the City Council and then, but you've got a city manager and you've got a planning commission. They either recommend approval or they don't approve. So how exactly does that process work?
So it can be really complicated depending on what you're trying to build, but also really simple. So maybe I'll try to take the simplest example. So this is a house. If you just wanted to build, you know, a shed or a room, you would have to go to the city planning department. And they would ask you for, you know, the design to make sure it's, you know, within code. We have design standards. I think Title 19 is our code for buildings. And then if it was sort of within the specifications, you would file, you would have a pre-application meeting with the city. They would tell you, you know, this is what you have to do or how you have to build that, you know, little casita to be within code. And then depending on how simple it was, you would go to the planning commission. And if it was a really simple item, you could actually just have the planning commission vote yes or no, and that could be it.
Right. So let me ask you, because I've read into this before. So the planning commission doesn't recommend?
They do recommend.
But I'm just saying, no, they can, they can recommend or not recommend.
Correct.
So let's say something comes before you and they don't recommend, then do you just arbitrarily follow their advice?
No, and actually, it's what's really interesting. Also, I will say, I have heard from many different people, businesses, homeowners, that the city really is the easiest place to do business. If you, you know, often go to other jurisdictions, it can take a lot longer or just be more expensive. And so people have been very positive about our city planning process and we're really trying to streamline things. So with every project, the staff will make a recommendation and then the planning commission will make a recommendation and it goes to City Council. And you see a variation. I mean, Mayor Goodman actually jokes because the, the staff only looks at, you know, the law, the Title 19. And so many times, they, I think, they, they won't recommend. And so the mayor will often joke and say, oh, you know, surprise, surprise. You know, our staff is like, once again, like denying. But, you know, they're not looking at the value of the project or, you know, they're just looking at whether, you know, it truly meets the Title, Title 19 code. Yeah. So you see a lot of variation. I mean, I think, I'm just trying to think, you know, I feel like what happens a lot is if they're, what I would recommend is that people talk to the City Council people early to talk about the project, like, you know, does this make sense? What would you like to see? And so I think a lot of times it looks like there's a lot of approval because there's been so many conversations beforehand to make sure that the neighbors, you know, like it, that the City Council person likes it. So there's a lot of dialogue with each of these projects.
Is all the infrastructure in Ward Six for more growth? For example, Las Vegas Valley Water, sewer, envy energy, towers for cell phones, you know, internet service, garbage. Did I miss anything?
No, I think you pretty much covered it because that's, that's always been something too that like, we don't, I just, and this is just my personal opinion, that I don't, I would like to see, set up the services before you build. If that makes sense. Because sometimes I just think we're overbuilding and we don't have the proper services.
Yeah, like I said, when I first moved there, cell phones didn't even work. So, I mean, do we have all those utilities, infrastructure to, to cover the growth? That's coming crazy over there, let me tell you.
Well, definitely in the master plan communities, the developer is responsible for bringing all of that. Yeah. And that's actually why I think development on Kyle Canyon has been maybe a little bit slower right now because, you know, there's nothing out there. So they're going to have to put in, you know, water and, you know, connect the water to the water base or the water pump. I know we just approved a couple of cell phone towers to go out there, so.
So there's no billboards out there. I like some.
I think there's a moratorium. I believe there's a moratorium on billboards, actually.
Explain, please.
Yeah.
I believe even before I got to the City Council, the City Council and I believe the county had put a moratorium on billboards. And so you, you know, you're not taking down the existing ones, but I believe that you can no longer permit new. And if those come down for whatever reason, then you're not allowed to put new ones up.
Well, what am I supposed to do with my, my political candidates? I mean, there's no, there's no more.
You have A-frames. We had like a trillion A-frames in Ward Six.
Empty lots are being built on and you can't put A-frames up.
We still had like an A-frame that was just collapsed and, you know, political posters still up.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of, but a lot of these empty lots, in the A-frames defense, a lot of, a lot of these empty lots are being, being built on. So, I mean, usually see A-frames on empty lots, but what happens if empty lots are no more? Then A-frames are no more.
We still have a lot out in Ward Six, actually, empty lots.
Oh, yeah? Really? Because I just see all these big for sale signs. If you go down Jones across the cemetery there, that empty lot area, now they got these big 3,000, 4,000 square foot homes. There used to be a huge empty lot there on Jones and Whiskerin. And now they got eight homes on there and their people already moved in. I mean, it's just, it's just crazy building. So, 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 and I know I'm on the island, I'm on the island, but I'm sure that off my little island of Clark County is Ward Six that has the same setup like I have because I'm on septic, right? And I'm on, I'm on well water, okay? So here's my thing. So do you think that the city could give out grants or some type of waiver or, you know, like, like the Las Vegas Valley Water does to change from sod to desert landscaping? You know, when they give you the money.
The rebate, yeah.
To change, well, in this case, to change from septic to sewer? Because if, if all these, all these homes that are on septic and they go on sewer, all that water from the well will be collected and they're, they're going to have all this water that they never had before. Because we're pulling it from well, we're not using Las Vegas Valley Water, right? So we're giving all our water, all our used water that we really don't want, instead of it going in the leach field, we're giving all of it to the city or the county or whatever. So you think they could develop some type of program to, to get people to switch from septic to sewer? So you guys capture all the water?
There is actually a program. So in the last, in the last legislative session, there was a bill, AB 256. It was sponsored by the water, Southern Nevada Water Authority. And initially, they went into the legislative session requiring that people converted to septics. And it's, it is going to be, as you sort of hinted at, a very expensive proposition. And so by the end of the session, they had backed away from requiring it and they're making it voluntary and there is funding to help people.
I think they should take care of all of it. 100%. You know why? Because I'm giving you the water.
No, I know, but I mean, I think they, I can't remember the cost estimate, but it is like hundreds of millions of dollars. So there is money. I think it's kind of first come, first served. I would contact the county commission. I know my planning commissioner is actually looking into this too, so I can send you the information. But also, I had heard that the federal government is also, will have a program as next year or there's money in the budget should it pass to also help people convert to septic. I heard that maybe Senator Cortez Masto's office was collecting sort of a waitlist of people. But I can track down that information. So the short answer is there are funds to help. It just may not be enough. It certainly won't cover everyone right now.
So I should contact my county commissioner, which is Marilyn Perpatrie.
Yes, you could do that.
Do you get along with the county?
I do, yeah.
Is that an inspiration, maybe somewhere down the line for you to run for county commission?
I love my, I love working at the city. I keep joking.
I've been there a year. Shut up.
I keep joking, you know, when I finish this, I'd love to go work for the city. I've been so impressed with how professional everyone is and also everyone. I mean, a lot of times you hear the government and big bureaucracies, you know, are just, no, we can't do it. Everyone I talk to at the city, you know, looks for a way to say yes. You know, if it's a development project or a homeowner, like, they try to find a way to say. they try to find a way to say yes and do really progressive in what they're doing. So I've been super, super.
Yeah, that's one of the things that I was gonna say too is because uh, actually, everybody likes to complain. But I think the city of Las Vegas, for the most part, does a good job. I mean, they're, they're, they're responsible.
Yeah.
Uh, but uh, so I wanted to ask you this question because we were talking more, because I'm keep, after coming back from Miami, I'm huge on land use. So when we start talking about the infrastructure, so when uh the construction company comes to the city and says, hey, I'm gonna build this master planning community or whatever, who pays for that infrastructure to be built first? Because I don't want my taxes going up. Do they have to pay for that? Like, okay, so we don't have water on this property yet. If you guys approve them to build this master planning community or apartment, the houses, what et cetera, does the city have to pay to get water out there? Or do they pay the cost to get the water out there?
It is the responsibility of the master developer to do that. And I know um, for example, we have uh the Upper Las Vegas Wash, which is a project nine hundred acres, you know, sort of virgin land right now. And it's just been slow going because they're trying to secure the water. And um it is the master developer's responsibility to sort of build that infrastructure. I mean, obviously, the city can weigh in and and help with the negotiations and the conversations, but it's really uh the, an arrangement between the developer and the Southern Nevada Water Authority, if you will.
Okay. I know Tully Springs is in your.
Yes.
We're not, we're not getting rid of that, right?
No, we're not.
Okay. Is Gilcrest Farm, Gilcrease Farm, is that, is that in the city's jurisdiction as well?
I believe that's in the county pockets. Cause the farm is right across from that. That's in the county. I think that little area right there.
Hold on that island.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well.
Yeah, we have lots of county islands in Ward six and then Ward four literally is like a donut where they've got county like right in the middle and then Ward four goes around the ring. Yeah. It's so fascinating.
I, I think the counties just rip you guys off, maybe.
I think it's a failure of enforcing gerrymandering laws because that's actually not, but. That's a subject.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something that is in the city. I'm, I'm moving down to downtown Las Vegas now. And, and I brought this up on the last show. There was a judicial candidate running for um, um judge. So in downtown Las Vegas, you, I, you've been here how long?
Sixteen years.
In, in downtown Las Vegas, we used to have um this courthouse and they call it the one stop shop. They took away from the old courthouse when they left the old courthouse. And, and they got rid of it. They built a new courthouse and they used to have Supreme Court. They had Las Vegas Justice Court. They had.
Where was that?
It's, it's right across the street from City Hall. Or actually, right across the street from the jail. Right across the street from the jail.
But you're not talking about the new city. Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna get to the new city. We'll get to that. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm painting you a picture. So, so that courthouse, the one across the street from the C C D C.
And that's not the Regional Justice Center?
The Regional Justice Center.
Okay, so that's what you're talking about, okay.
So, so the Regional Justice Center, there was another courthouse on um, where they have a um, they, it, it, they had tunnels to go to um C C D C and, and they got rid of that courthouse and all that. So now they have this new courthouse. Well, it was new. And um, it was a, it was called a one stop shop courthouse. They had Muni in there for the city of Las Vegas. They have justice, they have district, and they had Supreme. So Justice Hardison said, you know, I'm, I'm out of here. So Supreme Court left and they, Supreme Court got their own building on Clark, right? In Las Vegas Boulevard. So then, all of a sudden, Muni says, hey, I'm out of here too. So they built this courthouse right across from you guys at City Hall. So they built this nice courthouse and then I, I started to get complaints because I get complaints from people. Cause they want me to do something about it. So I get complaints and they're, and they're like, well, in front of this new courthouse, there are like five law enforcement parking spaces. Across the street from that, from the courthouse, there are two law enforcement parking. And on Thursdays, there's a food truck that occupies one of them. And, and to the um, to the uh west side of the courthouse, the one that faces um, the city, City Hall, there are ten law enforcement parking. On the south side, you can park, right? Because of that street. And you got the R J C bus terminal over there. And on the um, on the uh east side, you can park because there's no parking. So they said, where's the handicap parking? There's no handicap parking. So you have to park at the city, um, city of Las Vegas garage. And you gotta wheel across Main Street. And then you gotta wheel across City Hall, saying hi to Dr. Bruni. Wheel across City Hall's um, 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 sidewalk there. And then you gotta go across that one street to get to um, to be in front of the courthouse. And then you gotta go across another street to actually be on the same block as the courthouse. So I complained, I complained. And I complained to the um, to the presiding, to the um chief judge. And I complained to the former chief judge. And I'm, I also complained to the city, the, the, um, not the city clerk, sorry. The court, the clerk of the court. And nothing is being done.
What was their response to you?
They said they don't need to have a handicap spot there.
Okay, I'll look into that.
I, 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 I think it's disgusting. It's really, it's, it's disgusting.
Well, especially because.
Seventeen, seventeen law enforcement spots. Even on Thursdays, the food truck got their spot too. The food truck, but they have no handicap po- handicap spots. You know what they told me? I, I remember they did tell me something. They said you could go park at the regional um transportation, but you can't. Because if you're not conducting business there, you get towed. And it's for employees only, some, some of those spots.
Well, I'll look into that. And it surprises me only because we actually had a veterans court. We have, the city has, I think, seven or eight specialty courts. And one of them is veterans. And so, you know, many of our veterans are. Yeah.
I got handicap plates on my truck.
So um, I'll look into that.
Please do, because I'm, I'm not getting anywhere. I was gonna make a big stink over City Hall and public, public um. Your public comment. But I'm like, eh, I'm too busy. I never got there. But I was thinking about doing it, but I never, I never got to it.
So I'm glad you brought that up, public comments. So when uh, public comments come up, just, and, and I know you're gonna give the politically correct answer, which you should. And, and that's perfectly fine, but I mean, be, be honest though, i- as much as you are willing to be honest on it, when public comments come up in city council meetings, how seriously do you guys actually take those? Because I mean, I understand because Steve and I went to plenty of city council meetings. And, and sometimes even Steve and I, before we get up and talk, we're just like, what in the world is this person talking about? So how, how do, how, how do you guys handle that though?
I think it depends on the issue. Um, I, I know I always feel a little bit challenged because we're not allowed to engage or have a conversation. So like even today, they were asking or sharing something and I wanted to just get a clarifying, like, well, you know, they were talking about something which I think the property was actually in the county, but I wasn't sure. And you just, you're not allowed to actually, I mean, sometimes the mayor will, but you know, the general uh consensus is we're not allowed to engage in a conversation. So I, I find that a little challenging sometimes. I mean, really, it can make a difference. I've, I've actually um, make it, I haven't been there very long, but some of my fellow council members will actually switch their vote on something after they hear public comment. Like they may have told us, you know, in the back room, like, oh, I'm probably gonna vote yes on this. And then they'll hear people come, share the story or, you know, present their argument. And they'll actually then do exactly the opposite of what they said they were gonna do. So I think it, I actually encourage people to come make public comment.
Okay, so let me ask you a, a follow up question on that. And I'm glad you brought that up. So there would have to be a timeline that obviously, because there's only so much time and don't wanna get into a huge debate on it. But so is there some way maybe that rule could be changed? I mean, so if I'm, if I'm directing the city council and I'm making a statement, some uh, like for instance, say I lived in Ward six, which I don't, I live in Ward one, but so I could just go to Knutson and, and he could, he could actually say, can you clarify a little bit? And maybe twenty, thirty seconds, whatever.
I think that's, that is more likely to happen when you actually test or offer public comment on a specific agenda item. If it's at the beginning or the end, or it's kind of general public comment, um, I think it's harder to do that.
Okay. And the reason why I ask is because, and one thing Steve and I have been working on for, what, fifteen, sixteen years now, is trying to get the public to engage more. Because uh, what I have found over the years is voters complain a lot about government not being efficient enough or doing enough, but they don't engage.
It, yes. But I will also, I will also say, I don't know if we make it really easy. I mean, someone has pointed out, we have our city council meetings during the week when, you know, most of us work, right? It's not friendly to working class folks who, even if they're concerned about an issue, they're gonna like take time off. They may not have vacation time. They better come, they better find parking. Like, we're not making it really user friendly. It's interesting that um, I don't think the county does this, but I sit. Well, first, first of all, let me say, I think, I think it may be open meeting law that regulates um, or restricts our ability to have a conversation with the public comment. Because I sit on a number of um, government commissions. And it's kind of across the board, you're not allowed to engage when people offer public comments. So I think that's part of the open meeting law governance framework. Um, but you know, the school board meets in the evening and you see a lot of people turn out to offer public comments at school board meetings. You know, and so, and so, you know, and um, you know, why? And I guess somebody said that we actually, the city council used to actually hold their meetings in the evening. I know, I think Henderson does their city council meetings in the evening. Um, North Las Vegas does, okay. And so um, you know, maybe that'd be a conversation.
And North Las Vegas does too, actually.
For the new mayor, you know? So I, I, so I agree. I don't, I hope, I, I encourage people to actively engage. I used to, you know, run new civic engagement programs. And I think it's so important, but I would also say we're not making it really friendly for, or easy for people to engage.
But I, I find it best if I'm dealing with a particular um ward, is to go meet with that city council person.
Yeah.
I find it, I find it works best that way.
Well, I don't know, you know, how long or what other state you came from, but I, I've, you know, people always say Nevada is still that state. I mean, even though we're growing, it is still a very small state. So if you, if you want to call Councilman Knutson, you could easily meet with him. Whereas in California, like, you'd have to go through like ten assistants. And I mean, so it's, we're very flat and accessible here. I think that's um, one of the real crown jewels of Nevada is you can pretty much meet with any of your elected officials, still, even though we're growing.
Too many gatekeepers sometimes.
I don't think there are here.
Yeah, sometimes they can be. Depends on the subject you wanna go and talk about.
Tell you here, oh, I got a call from Steve Santon. They pick up right away.
Oh, you better go find out. So, so, yeah, I, 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 I enjoyed, I enjoyed going into, I haven't been there in a minute. But I, I used to enjoy, I, I ran for city council one time, back in um, two thousand and uh, four. When I, when I, when I, when I lived in the um, city council jurisdiction, I ran against Steve Ross.
Steve Ross.
Yeah, it was like twelve of us.
Did you live in a different house or?
Yeah, I lived on the other side of the um, of the ninety five.
Okay.
Yeah. I lived on the other side of that. I live close, um, it's, it's, I was over by um, um, uh, was it? It's not Port Apache, it's, what's is it?
Wallop?
Wallop High area, around there.
Okay.
Yeah, matter of fact, I was H O A president for my little.
God bless you.
Housing area for a minute.
H O A is hard.
For a minute and then I, and then I, and then I left. But I was at city council all the time. I used to almost live there. In fact, they probably thought I was one of the city council staff members. So, and I was used to bust Ricky Barlow's chops.
That was the old building though, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The old Zappos, the. Matter of fact, we did an endorsement interview for mayor when, when, um, yeah, when Caroline first ran for mayor. And when we had Larry Brown, Chris June Chiliani, George Harris, Victor Chantallette, whatever his name. Victor Chantalay, the millionaire guy was his name?
Yep.
Victor, whatever his name is.
Guys last time, there were so many people. That, that was a good event though.
Yeah, we, we had to go to no endorsement on that one. I, I, I probably would've got shot by somebody, so. It was, it was crazy back then.
Right. So my, my next question, and this is just general information for viewers and listeners. A lot of people don't understand how city government works. And I had stated in the beginning how important I think city council is. And well, it's because I'm, I'm a political geek. You know, I'm actually very engaged in politics. But can you explain for the viewers and listeners exactly how city government works? Like, what's your role as a city councilwoman? And in relation to the mayor's role? And kinda how city government in general works?
So from a very broad level, there are uh, there's a mayor and then she represents sort of the whole city. And then there are, the city is divided up into six wards. And the neighbors in the sort of geographically focused in every geographic area has a representative. So um, some cities, right, you'll, you vote kind of district wide. In Las Vegas, you vote to represent a specific geographic area. And we all come together twice a month. Um, everybody has the same vote. So the mayor doesn't have a an outsized vote compared to the city council members. We all take a vote, majority rule. I will say um, Las Vegas has a strong county manager form of government. And so, sorry, city manager form of government. And so the city staff, you know, they put together the budgets, we vote on it. Um, we only hire and fire three positions. That's the auditor, the manager, and our city attorney. The city manager hires all other senior leaders. Um, I think city government is really important because if you think about your day and what, you know, gripes you have, um, you know, as you're driving to school or to work, right? You notice the traffic. You play with your kids in parks or think about where you're gonna go. And so all those things that really touch your life, you know, whether you have a rec center, whether your kid plays at a soccer field, whether there are cones, um, whether you have good security, those are all fundamentally local decisions. I mean, we are not, I mean, think about like, even though Medicaid policy is important, like, you're not thinking about Medicaid policy every day as you're driving to work. And so we're not doing like those big policy issues. We're really focused on, you know, do we have good parks? Do we have clean streets and safe streets? Uh, local law enforcement, we, the city funds um, uh forty percent of Metro's budget. And one of our top priorities as a city is public safety.
Okay, because uh, the reason why I ask that question is, and, and this is just for information for viewers and listeners. I'm like, okay, so you oversee Ward six, okay? So Steve lives in Ward six. He has a complaint. And you, you take it up. Well, but then, so like, you can't actually, if he wanted to do something that required policy, you couldn't just approve it? You would have to go to the other five members plus the mayor in order to get that approved?
Correct. And it depends, you know, we'd have to figure out what, is that a city issue or, you know, is that really county or a state? And so what happens is um, Steve would come to me with an idea. Then I would check with our legal train, say, hey, I have this idea. Can we look into it? And then the city legal team and the city manager all review the, the, the um, proposed ordinance to figure out, you know, does this contradict federal law or state law? Can we do it? What are the implications? Does it make sense? Is it gonna cost us money to do it? And then they would take it to the city council and we would vote on it. And in the city, it's called an ordinance. It's not called a law, the way it is up in Carson City.
Okay. Yeah, I just want you to know that veterans in politics has a long history with the city of Las Vegas. Especially when um, when you guys had your own elections. And now it's, now you run statewide with everybody else.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, which is a great thing.
I mean, we, 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 we have done um, 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 different things with um, former councilwoman, now regent, Lois Tarkanian.
Okay.
With the, with the flying of the Tob, flying of the American flag on, with Tobin on West Sahara. The neighbors were complaining about the noise and stuff like that. We even did a proclamation, proclamation of the United States Marine Corps over there and with, with Oscar Goodman. And that, that, that was fun. That was fun. And um, I I remember I I walked into former councilman Bob Bear's office, and I'm like, Bob, I just went to the um, to the, to the bail at the city jail. It was just in the city jail. Bail somebody out. So I'm I'm over there, and and what I noticed is that there's no cover. It's just right there, big window, and that's it. There's no, what happened if it's raining? What happened if the sun is beating down? What happened if it's breezy? I I, why am I suffering because somebody is in jail? I'm just trying to bail them out. I said, I said, we need some type of onen or something covering up, and then he went right to work. And now, now there is a covering on on that. Bob Bears is the one that.
But you brought in, you brought it to him. And I always told, you know, people call me about all sorts of things, and I thank them, because like, I'm one person, I can't be in every single place. And so if like, if the light's out or something's wrong, like, tell me.
Yeah, like graffiti. I said, hey, Oscar, there's graffiti down here. What are we gonna do? Chop off some fingers? What's going on? He didn't make a statement. But that was fun, but di- did we cover everything?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, you know, we really, really wanna thank you for coming.
Well, thank you for having me.
On a Wednesday night. You could be hanging out, you know, shooting pool. Studying some more, whatever, but.
Well, you give me something to follow up on, so I'll look into the ADA parking lots.
At least one spot for a handicap person, Jesus, seventeen from a, and 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 law enforcement don't even need all those spots. Because I, I mean, when you go down there, you s- they're empty. Majority of them are empty, but yes, please, please look into that. Jim, you have anything else for Councilman?
No, I have no more questions. I just wanna thank you very much for coming on. And uh, sorry if some of my questions were kind of vague, but I just.
No, they're great. It's a great policy conversation.
Yeah, and I I just basically want to like, try to get people to understand how important city council is and like the role they play and, but you've been uh, very uh, gracious and answered all our questions, so I just appreciate you very much.
Yeah, I hope we didn't make you nervous, Councilman. Um, Mark is gonna zoom in on you. And you you have the final word, um, say whatever, come down, whatever you point in contact. Keep our cities clean and safe.
Always open, and you can contact us at wardsix@lasveganenevada.gov.
Oh, that's it. Oh, that's a very short one. Again, thank you so much. Um, Jim, thanks, as always. Folks, that's uh, Dr. Nancy Bruni. She is the councilwoman for the city of Las Vegas, Ward Number Six in the northwest area. She was very informative, and remember, if you live in Ward Six, or you live anywhere in in Las Vegas, and you need to um, talk to one of your council people, just pick up the phone and schedule an appointment. Or if you wanna see how um, the city council worked, going down to the chambers with every, every Wednesday. Yes, and plus, they're gonna have a state of the city in January, right? Okay, yeah, just get involved, folks. This is Steve Sanson, Jim Jones with Veterans in Politics. Until next time.